The regular meeting of the Bellevue zoning board of adjustment for the township of Bellevue for August 4, 2016 will now come to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Mafucci, here, Montalbano.
Here. Here. Will everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, has notice of this meeting been given in accordance with the Sunshine Law? Has everybody looked at the minutes?
Yes.
Any problem with the minutes? The amended minutes?
Minutes.
Amended minutes, no? Okay, can I have a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Valano to approve seconded by Mr. Montalbano. Clerk, call the roll.
Mafucci.
Yes.
Montalbano.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Valano.
Yes.
Yes. Applications for adjournments. I have a number here. I have a letter dated August 3rd from Gassion Camaco Law Firm. And it says, "Relation to the Caratonus Realty Limited Liability Corporation, 318-320 Courtland Street, Block 8803, Lot 8. Mister, this is, we make it Mr. Di Lorenzo. Mr. Di Lorenzo, on anticipation of the above-captured application requesting certification of the pre-existing nonconforming use of the subject property as an office use, I would briefly like to summarize the application's position in support of the application." I don't think that's proper.
Well, I think that what you were saying if I went a lot along with the scene, and I think you even made that statement, if Frank E. said it was allowable, it didn't happen before us.
Right.
So he's making his pitch, I would gather to Frank.
Oh, this is to Frank.
Right, not to us.
Is there another letter?
No.
Oh, this is the only letter. Okay, then I'll read it into the record. Specifically, it is-
Should we read that later or what?
Let Frank, my suggestion would be to let Frank deal with this first before we get into the nitty-gritty of it. It may be moot for us, but let's see.
I'm reading it now.
He told me yesterday.
Yes.
Today I have a letter.
We don't have a letter. But since this is technically a new renter, so let's speak of a new tenant, technically, I don't think there's any time you're striking problems with this because everything was agreed to withhold it off until you have a new person and then it's going to go to Mr. Di Lorenzo and it's up to Mr. Di Lorenzo to make a decision. If Mr. Di Lorenzo makes a decision that it's okay, the case would be dismissed and we wouldn't hear it or it would be withdrawn. If it's not okay, then he has the option to move it on to us or to amend it possibly to a different application, a different letter application.
And that's what it had said last time.
But it also means that dependent upon what notice was originally given, he may have to renotice.
That's right.
Yeah, here it comes now. We're not going to discuss it. What we'll do is, let me see, where's our agenda? Okay, that's number three, I believe, on our agenda. And what we're going to do is, anybody in the audience who's interested, we're going to carry that to next month, to September 1st. So anyone who's here for the Caratonus Realty Limited Liability Corporation, 318-320 Courtland Street, that application will be carried over to next month. If we get everything, it may be the, well, it may be the first or second on the agenda, no later than the second on the agenda. And we'll decide what to do next month on September 1st, 2016. There'll be no further, there may be notices and there may not, dependent upon what is ruled on by Mr. Di Lorenzo, okay? But if you don't get a notice and you're interested, show up. Adjourned to September 1st, 2016. Now, I also have, where's the one I have? It's over here? Yeah, here it is, okay. Dated August 4th, also from Gassion Camaco, relation to Delia, 27 King Street, Bellevue, New Jersey. And this is to our secretary. Dear Michelle, this is to confirm that in view of the inadequate number of members expected for tonight's meeting, I request that the above-captured matter be adjourned to the next regularly scheduled hearing date without further notice. I waive the time constraints for the next meeting. Reverie to yours, Robert A. Gassion. So that is number one on our agenda, ZB 2015-34. There will be, 27 King Street, there will be no further notices either in the mail or in the newspaper, and this case is adjourned to September 1st, 2016. Now, the only case that we are going to be hearing, it looks like, tonight, is going to be the second case on the agenda, which is ZB 2015-29, 74-76 Palmer Avenue, Malazo, certification of an unconforming use.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Councilmembers of the Board, Paul Santagrosia, attorney up, we have the applicants.
Michelle, how's it going?
Well, I don't see yet, although they are aware of this evening's meeting in the time of commencement. I spoke as recently as yesterday. We've been waiting a long time to get in front of you.
Well, if I remember correctly, you didn't want to be on last month's agenda because somebody-
I was on vacation.
That's-
I wasn't, so you waited in front.
Do you have a phone number for them?
Yeah, of course, I left my cell in the car, so it wouldn't ring.
Yeah, all right. In the meantime, why don't you go call them and we'll do a resolution to be memorialized. Is that fair enough?
Yes, sir.
Anything to move along. Pass it down. Anybody else who's got a sign? That resolution, nobody has any problem with the resolution, correct? Let me see. That resolution will be ZB 2016-03, Tabarada, 164 Mill Street.
For Montalbano.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Mafucci.
Yes.
Valano.
Yes.
Doggerish.
Yes.
Do you want to talk with me?
Well, I'm not here at King Street tonight, just calling.
I know.
I need to get a pen.
I will see it.
Yes, sir, what's the story?
I got a voicemail.
Ah.
How about if I do my arguments, mostly documentary documentation anyway?
Are you going to be calling any witnesses?
Well, I'd have the owners here.
Okay. It's your case, whatever you want to do.
Okay. And then I'll ask them to, monk pro punk, agree to accept.
Michelle, you have cannon hose?
It was approved last time.
Oh, that's right, okay. And that was Mark.
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Michelle.
Speak very slowly until they get to you. My clients are Salvatore and Vita Malazo. They own the property in question, 74-76 Palmer Avenue, LeGumphy.
No.
Block, I'm on the-
You wouldn't have closed if you said nothing.
This is Block 8402, Lot 17, and it used to be known as Block 242, Lot 37. My clients have owned the property for 20 years. There are some documents appended to the application that I'd like to go through with you. As you can see, the first document is a deed, coincidentally prepared by Mr. Gassion to Mr. and Mrs. Malazo, dated 1996. The next document-
Excuse me. Inside says, being commonly known as 78-80.
Yeah, they bought both properties at the same time. They're adjacent, according to them.
But the deed just says one?
This is 242, Lot 37. Yeah, I have the legal description, if you wish. I mean, I can't say why. Thank you, though. The next document is a rent roll, customarily given at a real estate closing of even date 1996. As you can note on the rent roll, both properties are mentioned, 74-76 and then down below, 78-80. We are here today on 74-76. You can see that there are five tenants listed at that time. Yes, sir.
So hopefully we can agree that this document doesn't speak to legality of the apartment, correct?
No, we're just giving the facts and the history.
You're saying that as of 1996-
Yes.
It was-
But I have even more, as we proceed.
Yeah, okay. I hope so.
Okay. The next document is a survey map of the property, just to give you an idea. The next document is a tax record. I made a Freedom of Information Act request of your tax assessor. Front page has some interesting information on it. The next page, although it's difficult to see, it has to do with a revaluation done dated 1977. If you look in the upper left-hand corner, circled on my copy, I don't know if it's circled on yours, it indicates a five-family home, 1977.
Is this the one that's attached?
Yes.
That says 42577 on the bottom?
Yes, sir.
Oh, very good.
Says five families, right?
Yes, sir. So 1977, if you do the math, it's practically 40 years.
You really sure? You think so?
And 20 years-
Can I point something out?
Prior to my client's ownership.
To qualify this information, you know, why? On the page before, now I'm wrong, but on the page before, in the upper right-hand corner, what does that say?
Old ID, 242, new ID, location.
No, 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 I know what page you're on. The immediate preceding page of the one you were just talking about that said five-family units.
How many do? My client's daughter arrived.
Good, that's nice. Let's get back to this.
Yes, it's the upper now.
All right, in the upper right-hand corner of the immediately preceding page-
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
No, that's the page I think you're talking about. Or maybe it is that.
No.
No, it is that, you're right.
Okay.
In the upper right-hand corner, what does it say there, please?
Class 4C, 50 by 90, Bellevue.
How come you missed the line before that?
Location 78-80, Palmer.
Which is not the property we're discussing, sir. Now, would you like a copy of that? Because I went down to the tax assessor's office and got it. And on the second page that you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
It says four families.
I stand corrected, yes.
Thank you. Anybody else want to see this, by the way? If you want to see it, you can see it.
Why don't we-
No, we don't have that.
Wow.
That wasn't presented by the yapper.
Is that the back page of the one that I am referring to?
No, that's the actual building we're talking about. 74-76, I believe it is, or 76-78. And this one is 78-80.
Yeah.
Two different buildings, sir. They own both properties and they're adjacent to each other. And they're separated by a driveway that has parking spaces for both on the left and on the right and the back, like one in the inspection product.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two pages. On his-
I have to see if I have the original, look if that's the backside of the same page.
No, no, the one I have, I got right from the girl, she made the copy for me.
Okay.
And I got the back page and the front page.
And is that from the 1970s?
The same revaluation.
Okay.
Same, it's got the same date on the bottom, by all-
Okay. That was, that's my oversight. It came in response to a request, I didn't-
You want to see this?
I'll be happy to. Although I think I know what it said now.
It's too big.
It says the same two pages?
Thank you.
All of this stuff? I don't even know, that's why I do it.
Well, I appreciate this. I'm just looking at it briefly. First floor, three-room, four-room, second floor, three-room, four-room, basement, four-room apartment.
Yeah. Now, something else, since that's in black and white, I can tell you something else, too.
What does it say, how many units?
On the upper left, what does it say?
On the upper left of the front page?
Second page, blue. Same place as the-
Says four.
Thank you.
So, you know, don't confuse what they document to what it might be.
Yes.
You know, when they're documenting, because the tax office documents what's there, what all to expect. They don't care if there's 22 families in it.
Yeah. Well, we certainly weren't around, my clients were not the owners until roughly 20 years later.
I know the owners weren't.
And, I mean, it says what it says. On one page it says four family, on the second page it mentions four apartments and a basement apartment.
You mean the one I just gave you?
Yes.
Guess what? The one that says the basement is different age.
Yes, I don't know why that is.
Because it was done after the original 77. That's why.
I'm curious, respectfully, how Chairman knows that.
Well, I did very, very big research on it because it bothered me with your application. See, you make an application and Mr. Di Lorenzo gave you a denial.
Yes.
And if I could find Mr. Di Lorenzo's denial here, like this other case here, I think-
In the front-
Yeah. He goes, here's what Mr. Di Lorenzo put in here, all right? And that's why, when I see something so grossly different, I get confused.
1973.
Yes.
It says 1973, four-family, assessed from four-family to 2007, from 2007 to present and was assessed as a five-family. That's what Mr. Di Lorenzo-
2007.
Yeah.
Right, but in his application, it says applicant owner has purchased the property 1996 as a five-unit apartment building. They have owned and used the premises continuously without interruption as a five unit. The prior owner used the premises as a five-family home. During the 1977 townwide revaluation prior to the applicant's ownership, it was picked up as a five unit.
Yes.
So when I see that, which is in total conflict with Mr. Di Lorenzo put on his report, I get snoopy. And I went down and snooped around and found out that in your application, you had the wrong building.
I see that now.
Okay.
Although, again, the document that you showed me today, I don't know when somebody came and put their pen there, we don't know-
Let's put it this way, before the 77 revaluation, because it was different age and it's in bold, it was a thicker pen or whatever.
We have to rely on Mr. Di Lorenzo, it says it right here in his letter.
Well, there's no question that what happens thereafter and the rest of the exhibits indicate this property, PQ, as a five-family.
Okay, let's come to the bottom.
The page with the photograph of the building, and I realize that's much more recent in time.
So what this is saying is that this was picked up in 2007. See, we had a revaluation then, too. Mr. Di Lorenzo's reporting.
It is denial, you have that.
I do have that.
And it says that in 2000, from 2007 to present day, it is shown as a five-family.
Yes.
From '73 to 2007, he stated that it was shown as a four-family. Am I saying it correctly, Frank?
Yeah, at least as it relates to the tax assessor and records.
That's recent.
What I will listen to testimony and what the first document I showed with that in 1996, there were five occupants.
Which document are you talking about?
The first document, the deed and the rent roll from their closing.
In '76?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six.
Oh, in '96?
Yes. So I'm not-
Well, we're just saying, the tax department didn't pick it up as a five-family until 2007 because that's when the revaluation was done.
That could be. And that was the last revaluation since the one in the 1970s?
Yes, I believe so.
It was one in '79. It was one in '77.
'77.
Well, the building was only built in 1974, so nothing before that's going to help us. There was a revaluation in, this document is '77? The next town-wide revaluation? Does anybody know that date?
I believe that's the one in 2007.
Okay.
I'm making a suggestion. We need to get away from now from paperwork and what the tax assessor shows.
Yes.
You need to indicate to us through testimony that, you know, at some point in time, there was a zone change. I assume, based on this application, I'm assuming your position is at some point in time, a five-family was permitted in this zone. I don't know, but that's your argument, I think. And then the zone changed to not permit a five-family. So what you need to show us, in this kind of case, forget the paperwork, forget the tax assessment and all that. Was it ever a legal five? When did it change to make it not permitted? And has it continually been a five-family? If you can show that, then I think you're in pretty good shape.
But the problem with that is, it was never legal. I'm going to tell you why, because the density, the build, the property's not that big. And since we approved 25 units an acre and then it went down to, I believe, it was 18 or 16, and then down to 12.
16 and 12.
Yeah. It's, I don't believe it's ever been legal. I don't think it would come up with 25 units an acre and be legal, to be honest with you.
I think it was a super's apartment that was down there and it was recognized.
That wasn't supposed to be an apartment, it was a super's apartment. So that doesn't make it legal.
No, no, no.
See, what we deal, what we try to deal with is the legal aspects of it. Revaluations, a state inspector comes in, he sees a five-family, or like Willie said, he sees a 22-family unit.
Yeah, yeah.
They don't care about the zone.
I understand.
They just want to make sure the 22-unit is safe and meets the state codes. That doesn't make a 22 legal, nor does a tax assessor. A revale, revales always pick up-
And they want their money.
Units because it's when someone buys something and it's not a legal whatever, through no fault of their own, you know, someone, a builder says it's a five-family, you know, it's assessed as a five-family, but we look at whether it's ever a legal five-family. And if not, and if you want it, you either do this route or use variance route.
Yes, okay, I understand.
Yeah.
I understand that, I don't know the year of the change of the zoning.
Was it ever a legal five-family? It only goes back to '74?
Counsel, as you know, nowadays, this is all rectified by, at a time of the change of ownership, seller comes to City Hall and gets a certificate and presents it to the buyer. Apparently that wasn't the practice.
We know back then, there was no COs, my wife gets-
Exactly.
Yes, prior to '90, yeah.
Right, so that answers that one.
And the zoning officer, we're only having, if the zone changed, there's only a one-year window where the zoning officer on his or her own-
Has authority.
-issue that.
I understand.
Then by law, it's got to come here for, but look-
But only this hearing and-
Well, as long, if you show us what we need to, what we need to do to support it, then that's fine, but I think you need to start, was it ever a legal five? And if we can't answer that, then-
And you need to go back to, what was the zone, what was permitted, you know, when it was purchased or built, whatever you want to call it, because you're still, they're still self-discreting, see, the way I see it, it wasn't picked up that it was being used as a five-family up to 2007.
Yes. The only thing I can do to respond to that, Mr. Valano, is how the owners testify the condition it was in when they purchased it 20 years ago and how it's been used since. But I mean, that's almost not in dispute.
That doesn't mean it's legal, sir.
It doesn't mean it's legal.
It has to be a legal five-family at one time.
If it were, we wouldn't be here.
No, yes you would.
If it were legal.
Oh, no, you wouldn't be here, that's right.
I mean, if we had some document that's saying, yes, in 1996, when you purchased-
No, no, that's not true either.
If it was legal, I mean, we deal with these almost every month.
I understand.
If it was legal and you showed us it was a five, a good, a permitted five, zone changed, it's still a permitted five, that's a home run. But then we can, we can say it's a permitted non-conforming-
At the time.
Okay.
At the time, but we have to look back and see what-
What was permitted.
Because you can't take a use that was never, and I'm not saying this is the case here, you can't take a use that was never permitted and simply by passage of time, even if it's 40 years, make it permitted unless, unless the zone changed, it makes it permitted. So we have to see if it was ever permitted at any point in time. And we deal with those a lot here, because-
And to your point, well, that's, I always say, and we always say, tax records are good information, but they do not, I, it's part of a building block for us.
I understand.
But it's not, it's not the end-all of end-all. For me, we rely, we would ask you to build a case on what was permitted, when it changed, things of that nature.
Okay.
Along with, you know, tax records, phone records, things of that nature. But one piece alone does not make a case, is what we're saying.
It seems that, since this house was built, from what I'm seeing and what you've said, in '74, and according to Mr. Di Lorenzo's letter, this house has slid between a four and a five. Four-family use, five-family use, but we need to focus on in '73, '74, was it a permitted four-family use? Or was it a permitted five-family use? And how has, how things changed?
Well, I believe, and I would like to swear with Mr. Di Lorenzo, because we haven't sworn him in yet, and that would be proper.
Frank Deanna?
Yes, I will.
With regard to this application, you swear your testimony and comments show you the truth.
Yes.
Frank Di Lorenzo, zoning officer, Nashville, Bellevue.
Now, Frank, when this building was built in '73, it was built as a four-family, correct?
Correct. But I believe they had the super's apartment in there, that was the fifth apartment of the building.
But that was not considered a legal-
No, no, they didn't make it five, the super just stayed down there, they probably didn't collect rent and, you know, they didn't pay rent.
Kept his tools down there.
Right, he did the little fixing where they did that there.
It was like, you know, an office or something like that. So that was the situation, and according to the tax records that I found, that was the situation also with the revalue in 1977, because this is four families.
Right. And then-
With the apartment, with the super's apartment, which seems to be the bugger here.
Well, guess what? It's not listed. It's not listed as a super's apartment, not listed at anything. The building is listed as a four-family illegally, period. Whatever was used for that basement, it could have been an apartment, or it could have been just an office, or a place where he kept his tools and supplies for fixing things in the building, because I believe both houses or both buildings were owned together by the same people.
Yes, and so-
Okay, so he was probably doing it for both. Okay, so he was probably doing it for both buildings. Now, the other building, seventy-eight, eighty?
Yes.
That's a way older building. And that's also higher up on, on the grounds, and probably the fifth apartment is legal at that point.
Yes, exactly.
But, but it, there's no, this is a new building, built in the early seventies. And it's only shown as a four family up until the revaluation
Two thousand and seven.
In two thousand and seven.
Which is not the same as a rezoning. If I could ask Frank a couple of questions.
Sure.
Thank you.
Frank, it was originally built as a four family in seventy-three, seventy-four.
Correct.
Do you know if the zone at that time permitted a four family or was it built via a use variance?
I didn't find any, uh, thing that they went in front of the board. That doesn't mean they didn't. Because I don't have all the records up there, from the fire, or I guess what happened in the seventies or eighties.
Would the RC zone affect me now?
I, I believe it, back then, it might have been a mixed zone back there in the seventies. Because I think we're going off the fifty-seven ordinance back then.
Well, we don't know if four was. Do we know if four was permitted back then?
It may, it may have been.
All right. Then my other question is, from that time till now, to the best of your knowledge, has there been any zone changes?
No.
So, so it's both as a four and legally, presumably. And it's been a four, well, it's been a combination, but legally, it, it feels as though we're talking four.
And there's no record showing they applied to make it a five?
No, although the records aren't, just to take the other side of that point, apparently those records aren't available. They're not within the control of my clients.
You lost me there. If you applied for.
No, my clients didn't, because they purchased in nineteen ninety-six.
But the proper procedure is, if I'm not mistaken, I'll ask Mr. Di Lorenzo. Whenever a permit is given, Mr. Di Lorenzo, say to increase the amount of units, isn't that passed on to the tax department?
Oh, absolutely.
So it should have been picked up, but it wasn't picked up until two thousand and seven. And there is no records missing from two thousand and seven onward. I think the records only got destroyed when the late seventies?
Mine, yeah.
Euros.
The building in tow, yeah.
Or even eighty-four. So even if it's eighty-four, the thing is, all the records before and after they bought this property, Mr. Di Lorenzo has. And he had never had anything saying, asking for it to be increased to five. And if he did, it would have been passed to the tax assessor's office, and it would have been picked up as a five. Not in a revaluation in two thousand and seven. That was picked up accidentally because of the revaluation.
I told you, I don't like it when I'm the only application.
But you should be happy. I'm the only one asking questions, not Mr. Valano.
Well.
I'd like to ask a question.
Go ahead.
Is this up for sale? Is that why it came to us?
No.
No.
Oh.
No, sir.
How did it come before us? We had a complaint, I believe. You had a complaint?
Yeah.
That it was being improperly used as a five?
Yeah, a while ago.
In general, if I can ask the witness, have you had trouble with the Malazos running that property or complaints or anything? I don't know if that helps, but if you're making a determination, it's maybe one more factor on that side of the scales.
All right, just wanted to know how it got started, first question.
One other question. The driveway serves in both the closets, correct? Both buildings? Is there an easement that permits to use by boat?
Yes, I'm sorry, I don't know who's speaking tonight.
When you're ready, we'll swear it in.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Uh, one question I think we have with Mr. Valano, I mean, not Mr. Valano, Mr. Di Lorenzo. We noticed something on your denial, Mr. Di Lorenzo. On the second page, do you want that?
That's a typo.
It's a typo, okay, good. So it should be four?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you want to switch one of you?
I just want, you know, to be fair here. You might wanna think about getting more evidence, more, rather than putting out a case or.
It's up to him if he wants to turn.
Just give it to you. Listen, I'm, I'm not.
You're not excited.
I'm, I'm not tough, I'm not a blind side. I'm just telling you. Right now, I don't in my mind, your evidence is what you got so far. So, show me the tax records. Well, if you're asking me to lean on anybody's letter, I'm gonna lean on Mr. Di Lorenzo.
I don't dispute, Mr. Di Lorenzo, the record, and I appreciate your recommendation, and we may accept it.
I'm being, I'm being funny.
No, I understand.
You know, so what I'm saying to you is, if Mr. Di Lorenzo tells me that it was a legal four family up to two thousand and seven, and then from two thousand and seven, it changes. Now, I want you to think like they told me. I know you showed me what the closing documents are, and I respect that, but they don't, they don't speak the legality. You know that, right?
No, I understand that that's not conclusive, otherwise we would need your discretion.
Listen, you could have put down, there was eighteen families during closing. It doesn't speak to legality. Mr. Di Lorenzo's letter speaks to legalities, okay? And so, and so I have to rely on that. And so, you know, when I think that your clients bought it in ninety-six, right? And so, I have to say to them, and you're saying to me, my clients didn't change anything. Is that what you're saying?
In essence.
In essence.
And that they've treated it in the state and.
But you think, you do see the conflict that's in my head.
I do, and that's.
You're asking me to make that leap, and I'm saying, clearly, I need more data.
Okay.
I'm gonna.
But there's something else to point out on this. They bought it when?
Nineteen ninety-six.
Ninety-seven.
And they bought it nineteen ninety-six, and it wasn't picked up as a five until two thousand and seven. So for eleven years, they were paying taxes on a four, so renting it as a five then.
If we, if we take, you know.
I'll, I'll try to address that, because I'll find an old tax bill.
But
I, there's different things flying around.
We want you to get, we want you to.
I'm glad you're hopefully, you know, your clients understand as well what we're saying. I mean, if, if your clients, your clients have every right to testify. But if they're gonna stand up and say basically what you said, that they've owned it for twenty years, they, they acted in good faith, it's been a five family, we'll hear, we'll obviously hear that and take it in. But what Mr. Valano was saying is that's not a legal argument, that's an.
That's a hearts and flowers argument, yes.
But a five family may never have been approved, and it sounds like it hasn't.
I concede, for the, for the purpose of this discussion, I would concede that.
Okay.
And by going and searching somewhere in town hall, well, maybe Frank knows off the top of his head what the zoning was in this year and when it changed, the legal non-conforming use typical, isn't what we have here.
It sounds as though, since it was built, five was never implied, it was a four. So you're not, and, and if the zoning hasn't changed, the four doesn't magically go to a five. It may realistically go to a five, and it's picked up on the tax records as a five, but legally, it's a four.
But does the board have to?
You may be better served, and, and this is your call on your client, you may be better served rather than spending two weeks trying to find documents. Maybe commit for a use variance if, if your clients really want a five and approach it that way. Because this, this avenue, this section, section sixty-eight avenue seems to be
It doesn't fit exactly.
narrowing in on you.
Yes.
I mean.
I understand that.
No room to work.
I do understand that statute and that section of the land use law. I was hoping the board would exercise its discretion knowing that my clients owned this property for a time, and you're right, there's no sense in having them testify what is not really disputed here. They do own the property next door, they've been paying the tax, they, with the state, they file their rent level.
I think we're gonna agree with that on the facts. It, it's.
Yes.
That's not a problem, the facts aren't a problem, it's just whether the facts and, and we exercise discretion a lot, but it's gotta be within the bounds of the law. And if there was, if, if the zone, if it was a legal five, and they went to a four and then back to a five, then maybe we have something to discuss, but, but it.
Well, I wouldn't need you then, if we had a, if we had a zoning.
Well, if you, if you abandoned the five for a four, then you would still beat us.
Well, our testimony is that it's been continuous.
Okay, but, okay. But that doesn't make it.
Continuously may be.
Man, there's nothing personal about it, it's just, we have to deal with the, the body of law and you know, within that, within those confines.
This is where we're where we are, because it's a traditional board.
I understand. But judges have discretion, and I'm hoping you use the.
I'm a strict type.
Use strict construction. All right, well. Handwriting's on the wall. Which I, can I change the application to say use variance and reapply, or?
Well, I have to ask Frank if there's additional fees involved, because we're gonna have to have a report by Mr. Harretts.
Yes.
Both as a, possibly as a planner and an engineer, I don't know.
Yes.
Because technically, the density is a big issue here.
Yes, the density hasn't changed since ninety-six, twenty years.
Oh, yeah. Well, he has to do notice too, right?
Well, yeah, that's a totally different animal.
Frank, let me ask you a question, because Mr. Regal has picked this up.
Well, actually.
Pick, pick that up, this is, I think that's circled.
Now, while Frank is looking, while Frank is looking at that, have you.
Over your shoulder?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, we don't mind.
You're, you're strict, but you're.
We're talking about it.
We're only strict on the results.
Because they have both of them listed up there.
No, that's the corporation.
Seventy-four, seventy-six, and eighty, they're both on.
Yeah, but it's all one corporation. Yeah, but this, this is the seventy-four, seventy-six. See, this is, this is what it says here, because that the corporation owns both buildings. That's what, I, I researched that too, trust me.
In terms of a use variance, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to regroup. There's nothing you can do tonight, that's, that's same forms, but a different application, so your fees are gonna be different.
New notice.
New notice, Mr. Harretts, and you're probably gonna have to retain a land use planner, which there are whole, different kinds of land use planners all around, but, but that's a, that's a different law.
Just to be fair, you can proceed if you want, we're just trying to give you.
An alternative.
Well, we've come this far, I want your options. You're not gonna make a new application, you're gonna make a new application.
But, you know, they wanna proceed, that's your business, but, you know, I don't know why you wanna.
I don't know if it would be considered a whole new, you could ask Mr. Di Lorenzo, he would, to use that. So it'll be a whole new one, a whole new one, yeah, okay.
Well, does anybody have any, uh, positive feelings about the, the present application?
Not me.
I might go get my vote.
Not me.
We paid all this money, waited all this time for a vote.
We could always vote on it tonight, and then we could come back with a new application, we could do that.
I gotta make a new application anyway, it sounds like. But before you do.
To answer your question, I, I think I was pretty straightforward.
Absolutely, no, no question. You have the, the perfect.
It's not your clients. It's just, for them to make that leap, the tax records don't do it for me. And I, I like to tie in the, you know, the ordinance with, you know, my leap of faith, if you will. And, uh, then the other benefit you have, I, I'm a resident of that neighborhood probably for like thirty years. I know what was there at one time. So, I'm just gonna say, you know, I was, I graduated high school in nineteen seventy-six, okay? And I lived not too far from there, as well as Mr. Di Lorenzo there, and so we kinda know.
And how many units were they using when you were there? And maybe I get my testimony.
Well, not on using and legal is two different animals.
And I don't get testimony.
I know, but the whole spirit of the, uh, non-conforming use is.
That's not the spirit. That is not the spirit.
Oh, that's the spirit of it.
That, that is like a, a dead duck, what you're saying. What, what our, what the spirit of that is, is whatever was proven to be legally before a zone changed, that can continue.
Yes.
That is the spirit, that is the god, that is everything with that form.
Yes, Judge, but then all you're doing is stamping something and not using your judgment at all.
Well, you know why?
Because we establish.
But, but, well, but that's what you're proving, but the reason we're stamping that is because Mr. Di Lorenzo's not authorized to by state statutes.
That I understand.
So it has to come, actually, I believe the word in the, in the statute says must come before the zoning board after one year.
Yes, but if, if I have the perfect circumstances of a legal non-conforming use, and I can prove that in year one, this was permitted, and then five years later, the town changed.
And it wasn't.
Changed their zoning.
But you can't prove that?
No, I can't. I'm giving you a hand for that.
Listen, if you.
That's a perfect.
If that was the situation.
Then you, then you're just a rubber stamp saying, yeah, you're right, you showed us.
Let him understand, I don't like that one.
I don't need, you need, this is where you really.
But that's where we, that's where we would be making the finding that it was right, that you should have it as a five.
Yes.
But unless you could produce it, the proof, we can't make that decision. You want us to make a hypothetical decision based upon testimony. And that we can't do, we have to do it based on evidence.
I could, based on what we've heard so far.
Yes, I understand.
I should not, I could not draft the resolution, even if the board approved it. I could not draft a resolution based on the facts that I've heard that would hold court. And there's just no legal basis as of now for this, for this board to conclude that you've met the legal standards, because this is, nothing is, we're all in, in agreement on the facts. And the facts do not, the facts of quarter four, not five.
Counsel, not this evening, but some other time, do you have the years way back when and what the zoning for that particular neighborhood was and when it was changed?
I can, the clerk has it also.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
If she doesn't.
You made one.
Because I tried to investigate that for this purpose, and I, I don't go too far.
Let me give you a suggestion. I mean, Mr. Valano indicated that you could proceed, and you seem to say, we'll proceed. Wouldn't lose your draw, because we may have to come back anyway. My suggestion to you is to not if, if we vote tonight, and it's not to your client's liking, and you go out tomorrow and find something that would have helped.
That is helpful, okay.
Or the law, so you have to come back, and, and that, you may wanna keep that, that door open.
I appreciate that.
Satisfy yourself that, that, because if there's something there, bring it to us, because it's not our burden. It's your burden, bring us that, that situation.
I agree.
And if you can find it.
I believe he could make a request for reconsideration.
Yeah, or just not vote tonight, and I'll use tomorrow and the next day to see if there's anything in the ordinance that.
And if there's not, then you may wanna consider, well, you can either push ahead and get a vote, or withdraw and come back for a use, or.
Okay, we'll discuss that. Here's my only question, and this is, although it's not the town's burden to
Correct.
dig into what was the circumstances back in nineteen ninety-six or nineteen seventy-four. I would hope that I could get information from the town about what its ordinances were at that time.
Yeah, you can get by office or the clerks.
You have your old ordinances and zoning maps from.
Yeah, that's important. Not, we have the assessments, tax assessments are not. Don't, don't focus on those.
Your biggest, your biggest problem in this case, and I'm gonna be very honest with you, is that this building is so new. If the building was built when the other building was built, it may have been easier.
Okay.
But with this building just being built in seventy-three, seventy-four, there's hardly anything that's gonna help you, I know.
Okay.
But check it out.
But you could check, we have no objection, we're very open-minded.
And honest.
Do your clients, I wanna make, I wanna make sure that, because your clients have sat patiently there. I wanna make sure that they understand what we're doing tonight and aren't like wondering what's happening.
They have a hard time getting over that tax, paying the taxes issue, but I think they do, they're intelligent people. And I'll further explain.
I don't understand, you know, what they sold this property to us.
Well, that's, that's, you can, she can testify if she wants, but, you know.
Yeah, but I think your advice is good, to let us double-check the ordinance, history, and then let you know.
Yes.
And then we'll discuss whether it's worth it to do a use-up application.
No, they're gonna be sworn in.
Yeah, we have to be sworn in if they wanna talk.
Hey, you wanna, just ask, go, come on up, be sworn in.
I wanna ask you just so, you know, can I say a few words?
Sworn in first, man.
You can't just, okay, uh, with regard to this application, do you swear whatever testimony or comment you should give will be the truth? Okay, could you state your name, please, and spell your last name?
My name is Malazo, M.I.L.A.C.E.O.
And what your first name is?
Vita, V.I.T.A.
Doradros.
Vita?
Two five O, Copland Avenue, Lynn first.
Lynn first, okay, okay, and you've heard what's gone on up here?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure you understand that we're not really dealing with assessments of what people told you when you bought the house, uh, what realtors may have told you, there's a specific body of law that governs what we do. And so far, you're a little short in that area, but, but you can ask whatever.
No, but what I was just trying to say, if you, the law may say just, when we put this property to Lloyd and passed away, or what's, was the name of the lawyer?
Martin.
Martin, it was our, you know, the lawyer, he made it, he was for us all the years. So, and, and I believe that they told us that the building was five family, we paid for five family, so, and then all of a sudden.
Did you have a search done?
The search, when we bought it, I guess the, you know, no, we did a search when we checked.
Sure, but there's no question that it was a five tenant.
That is a tenant. The title search may not have those.
Title search doesn't take, but, but it's clear that there were five, that was the first exhibit, the deed with the.
And, 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 to your client's point, to your client's point, they can tell you there's eighteen families there. And then, that, that argument belongs, but the lawyer is not with us.
Yes.
It's.
They, they didn't used to have to go to town and get Frank's Lorenzo's signature, it was a different certificate.
Yeah, 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 well, even though they, you know, we were new, you know, we believe that there is, they, and the lawyer, they did the paper for us.
Yeah, if that, if that ordinance was in effect, I'm talking about the ordinance that requires a, uh, a CO, significant occupancy back then, this would have never happened. And I believe that was one of the reasons it was instituted, because of all these messes that were taking place.
I thought when the state, the key, the license, that everything is, it is five apartment, that doesn't count.
They don't care.
Because that's what you're asking them to expect.
The board does know that, and we dis- we discussed that before you got here, they don't disa- they don't disagree, or they believe all that stuff.
Oh, I see, I see.
Uh-huh. We believe the state, we believe the tax assessor, but it doesn't constitute legality.
The thing is, you could have a perfectly built building in a zone where it's not permitted, so from an instruction standpoint, it's perfect, from a zoning standpoint, you got a problem, so they're two separate, two separate things.
See, we don't know, like I said, it was the first time we invested, you know, to buy a property, so you love, you live and learn a lot, you know.
That's true.
Every day, every day.
I come in the tax paper, that's a five unit, and I paid taxes for five unit for twenty years, I don't understand.
On your turn.
I think you want to defend it, yeah.
I got the paper for twenty years.
Yes. And what the board is saying is, just because the tax assessor taxes you that way, it doesn't mean it's legal within the zoning context.
I don't understand.
I know, that's.
I, we come from Italy, I don't understand talk, I don't understand English, now I'm deaf, I can't explain myself the situation.
There, there's one thing that I could say to you.
I ask you.
If, if the board, if the board rules that it's only illegal four, you could always ask for a tax reduction. Because, yes, oh, yes, ma'am.
Not through here.
Not through here, through the assessor's office, you would break our decision, saying it's only illegal four, and you can't tax you with a five.
But now, another situation, I got the people who live in the, in the apartment for nine, eighteen years. Eighteen years, this girl, they have two boys, they're born in there, and I tried to send them out, they don't wanna go, because it doesn't like the apartment.
His first name?
They don't make no noises across the floor, they have a nice picture window, they, they gather around one morning.
All I can, all I can say to you, sir, if you get a vacancy in one of your two buildings, you can always put it there.
Mr. Malazo, just so, we're, we're on the record, could you put your right hand up, please?
If it's sworn in.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If I could speak to you. Um, with, with regard to, uh, what you've just said, uh, uh, what you've told us is, is the truth, correct?
Oh, sure.
Okay, okay, so I need to know.
Hundred percent.
Okay, I, I, I agree. All right, so it's up.
If they're a lawyer, what are you gonna do?
Wanna lift a fight another day?
I think we'll check with, uh, Mr. Di Lorenzo's office Monday, if there's anything in the, uh, old ordinances that helps. If there's not, I'll send a letter to your secretary saying, well, withdraw, and then we will commiserate on what they wanna do with use variance.
What their next, what their next step wants to be.
That way, that person that's been there for eighteen years won't be out on the street so quickly.
I understand your point.
I got a book.
I told you, I wouldn't sell, buy this thing.
Okay, that's, we're gonna handle this thing, so we're gonna adjourn this to next month, am I correct?
Yes, unless you get a letter from me, then there would be no need for the parents, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, no problem.
All right.
Okay.
Want to say something else before they close?
I don't have a lot to say, the only thing, I should have favor on, because these people, they don't wanna go out.
They don't wanna go anywhere else.
Do we need any, uh, extensions, kind of, no?
No, this is the first one, I think we're here, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good night.
So, uh, ZB two thousand and fifteen dash twenty-nine, seventy-four, seventy-six, Carver Avenue, Malazo, that will be adjourned to September first, two thousand and sixteen, and there'll be no further notices either with the mail or in the newspaper, unless you come to the new application. Okay, by the way, who has my copy of what I made?
Well, it's business.
No, that's okay.
No, that's your, that's the agenda.
Bill Willie, do you have my copy?
Yeah.
The tax copy that I found?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made to adjourn, do I get a second?
I'll strike.
All right, made by Mr. Malano, seconded by Mr. Montalbano, all in favor?
All right, all right.